About one minute. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call this work session to order. I'd like to make a few comments before we get started with this. Remind everybody that the regular public comment period is during the regular session, which is follows here at 5:00. But this is open discussion time as well. Also, I'd like to make a correction on the agenda. There is a name misspelled. It's not Ms. Culver, it's Ms. Hovert. I'd like to make that, clarify that for our board members and all that are present. We do have the people that are on the agenda tonight. And if you're here representing a group, we'd like to ask that you have somebody at the group speaker room, because this is only a 60-minute session. So we want to make sure that everybody that's here to make comments, that if you have groups that are represented, which I feel there may be. We do have an agenda with those who have had their names placed here, and those will be called out, and they'll have their opportunity to come forward and make comments. And any others that are here to do that, please be recognized by this chair. I'd be glad to have you to come forward and make comments. So at that, we call this to order. And first recognize, I believe it's Dr. David Ackerman and Jerry Ruth Roberts, if you would, please. And Mr. Ackerman, I think you and I have crossed paths along the way. I believe you were on the school board some years ago.
That's correct.
That's right. You and I, we were immediately together over recent.
That's right.
Do you remember?
Yes, I do. Let's recognize you.
All right.
I don't know if you remember or not.
Yeah, I did. Well, welcome to you.
And I'll be brief, because we have some other things going on in Cherokee County associated with why I'm here tonight, but also the school board. So they meet at 6:00. So I thought I'd be brief. First off, I'd like to apologize for Jerry Ruth. She is under the weather and is not able to come this evening, and she was very concerned how people would feel that maybe she was just getting out, but she's actually very sick. Jan Davis, who's one of our other board members from the Valley River Humane Society, is here tonight to help me address any questions that you guys may have, or some additional input.
Can I interrupt just a second? We can't hear.
Is that microphone working?
I'm the wrong person to ask.
Well, I hear it's not in your mouth.
How about that? Is that better?
All right. Thank you.
All right. First off, I would like to again thank the board commissioners, the county manager, and the public for including us in this work session this evening. My primary goal is to just talk with you briefly about Valley River Humane Society and some of the things that we do there, along with some of the services that we do provide to some other municipalities. As you go forth, you may find that you need some of those services, and we would just extend a hand and see if that was something that we might be able to assist you guys in. But again, I would like to thank you for having us this evening. The commissioners and the county manager have just a brief packet here of some of the things that I'm going to discuss tonight. And I will probably go over some of them very quickly, because you can read a lot of that information on your own. But again, I am here representing as a president of the Valley River Humane Society, which is located over in Marble in Cherokee County. Can you guys hear me now? It's an animal shelter humane society organization. And our mission statement is, "The mission of the Valley River Humane Society is to foster a healthy relationship between humans and living creatures, prevent animal cruelty and suffering, find quality homes for abandoned pets, and educate all ages about animals' needs and the value of responsible pet ownership." So first off, you can see right away, that doesn't really say anything about animal control, so that's not why I'm here tonight. Okay? As far as what we provide at our facility, we do take in strays or abandoned animals for the general public. The public can come in from any location, and with a donation, they can turn over an animal to us, and then our organization determines if that animal is adoptable, and we take care of some of the minor health needs, and if we can adopt it out, we adopt it out. If it's not adoptable, sometimes it may be with the sleeve. I mean, that's something that we don't like to talk about, and that's not one of our goals. Our goal is to adopt out as many animals as possible. Under that same umbrella, we do do some sheltering. We are not an animal control organization. We do some sheltering for some of the municipalities in the area. Those municipalities include Clay County and Cherokee County. And the way that works is citizens from those counties can bring animals over. They have a financial arrangement with us, so they can bring animals into our shelter. If we, you know, basically with the driver's license or some form of identification, and they can surrender animals to us, either on surrenders where they find animals, and then we work out the arrangement with the, with those municipalities. The way that operates, and some of you may already be aware of that, is there's a requirement to maintain, even if there's a citizen surrender from, say, Swain County or Georgia, we're required to maintain those animals for a 72-hour period. If it's not an owner surrender, we have to put out information through specific channels to try to find that animal's owner. And that's a, I'm being very brief about that, but that's a state statute that we just work with those municipalities on. In our operations, we also include a thrift shop that's located in Murphy, North Carolina, and that's actually one of our primary ways that we generate revenue to service our organization. There's actually a quite common misconception that the work that we do for Clay County and Cherokee County, or how we exist, the reality is, and I think Jan would attest to this, that's less than 20% of our revenue. So that's something we simply do as a service to the community, because we have the facilities to do it. And again, it does help us fulfill our mission of taking care of animals. The, as mentioned where the facilities are, we have a board. We are directed, the board directs the organization. We have a shelter manager who is certified by the state that can do all the legal aspects of an animal shelter. But again, we're not an animal control organization. And then, of course, we have a staff that works within that shelter. Some of them are paid, but a lot of them are volunteers, and we thrive on operation with volunteers. So if there's anybody that's looking for a place to volunteer, we certainly would welcome you there. That's the only plug that I'll put out there, Mr. Chairman. Our intake process, I've put that list in there for you, what we do when we process these animals, as part of our service that we provide, broken down the cost. You'll see that the number's not exactly, but the average cost for a 72-hour period is about $50 per animal. So generally speaking, if somebody just comes in and doesn't live in one of the areas that we service as far as municipality, we ask them for a $50 donation. Some give more, sometimes some can only give less, but that's what we ask of them. In that same packet, as far as our adoptions, which is what our goal is, and based on the numbers that I'm most familiar with recently, our adoption rate last year was approximately 39%. It's gone up to 45% so far this year. So again, that's one of our primary goals. But I have a list of what those fees are in there. And some of these things I've included for the, for your board, sir, simply because these are questions that we've got from folks before, like Cherokee County and Clay County. What, you know, how does your organization operate? I mentioned that we provide sheltering for those municipalities. Our goals, as far as an organization goes, is, I've just been elected to the board myself this past July. I think Jan just came on recently, but we basically have a whole new board. Like most organizations, they can have their ups and downs, and I think we were privileged to be included and try to get the plane flying upright, which it is at this point in time. But our primary goal is to continue to be financially solvent to perform our mission. Our second goal is to increase our adoption rate. So again, if you bring animals over there, that's our number-one goal, next to taking care of those animals, as long as it's necessary, we make every attempt to adopt them out. Our other goals as an organization, Valley River Humane Society, is to expand our services. We're trying to do this and actively doing this by working with other U.S.D. organizations to promote spaying and neutering. I think Ms. Hovert has participated in that in the past over in this county and promoted it. This probably many of the other people in some of your circle probably have it, but that's another potential resource that we can help, help you guys with. We also work with other organizations, like Logan's Run and some of the other rescue groups. We also are working on revamping some of our educational programs. Again, so not just sheltering is why we want you to know about us tonight, but we're working on an outreach program that maybe we could come over to Grand County schools, like we're trying to do with Cherokee County schools and Clay County. And again, responsible pet ownership, spaying and neutering. Again, I think this all is all one big circle that goes back to things like taking care of animals, not having as many strays out there in the public. And then we also have another service that we don't really know what else to talk about, but we do have a prenatory service there that we use, that we offer to private individuals, again, for their pets. This is another way, again, we try to generate revenue, along with many of our other fundraisers for the organization. And then we are available, but this is not something that I'm here for tonight, to consult with counties on certain animal control issues at their request, at the municipalities' request. We have resources that can help do that. And then, of course, our goal is potentially, if you guys need some animal sheltering services, we'd like to be able to provide that service for Grand County if it's necessary. What we have done for other counties, for example, Clay County, would probably be the best one to speak with you about as far as size and location, potentially. We have an arrangement with Clay County where their citizens and law enforcement agents can bring animals over to our facility to either surrender or to shelter for a period of time, whatever that time period would be. And they can bring them over on their own, or we actually have a service that, once a week, we drive out, our shelter manager takes a driver or one of her folks that works with her goes over to Clay County at a designated location at a designated time, so the citizens of Clay County don't necessarily have to drive all the way over, over to Cherokee County or over to Marble, North Carolina. A similar arrangement potentially could work with you guys if you ever got to that point where you needed some type of service. That's just something that I want to point out that we would, we would be willing to provide. Typically, we only do it one day a week, so there would be some coordination and some education of the public. You know, we'll be at Ingles Park, I'm not aware, but Maplewood Community Center, you know, from 10 to 12 on Mondays or whatever day of week it is, but wanted to point out that that's, that's one of the ways we work with the municipalities that we provide that service for. As far as a specific proposal to Grand County, I don't know that you're there yet, but again, we just wanted you to be aware of the services that we can provide to you. And I'm not, I've lived here for about 20 years. In fact, a lot of these guys I know, some of them, some of the folks in the front here, some of the hunters in the back, I know a lot of these people. So I'm familiar with, I think at some point in time in the past, you did use Valley River Humane Society for animal sheltering. And certainly, if we can do that again, we certainly want to entertain the idea. And there's several different ways that we could potentially do that. Since we're trying to be a financially solvent organization, there always has to be some form of an agreement or transaction that occurs. There are different ways that we can do that. We can potentially, historically, we've just had a set fee that we charge on an annual basis, and we provide the services for the individual municipalities. I think a better, potentially a better, and that's work, but a potentially better way to do it would be per animal or individual basis, where there's a designated resources for X number of animals per month or whatnot. And that, in my perspective, knowing a little bit about finance, mainly through the school system, you have to budget everything, and it has to be accounted for. So if there's an accounting mechanism that can say, okay, Grand County had 200 animals surrendered to the Valley River Humane Society for X amount, I think it makes it a lot more palatable for individuals to understand that, for the people that are worried about animals, and some of the people that frankly, they don't necessarily think this is a big issue. But also, on a per animal basis, it's something that I think would potentially fit into a budget better, especially if you're trying to develop something during the middle of fiscal year. And so the point that I'm trying to make there is that if our services are available, if you need them next fiscal year, maybe never, but next fiscal year or within this cycle, we're trying to figure out something to do, we certainly would be available to work with you guys. That's kind of the presentation, and I just wanted to go over what we do over there, what kind of services we provide for other municipalities, and leave it at that. If you guys have any questions, I'm open to entertain them.
Okay. I'm to understand, you just had a comment, that you had a conversation with our county manager.
That is, that is correct, sir. I failed to disclose that. I came, when I first got on the board, I was actually only the vice president at the time. Jerry Ruth, who's not here, had the first time with Mr. Cable, and then I could come over and talk with him briefly and see if there was some way that we could potentially provide some services for you. Yes, sir?
Turn them speakers up. I can't hear.
Excuse me, just a minute. If you'd like to speak, just hold on, okay? All right. What'd he say?
Turn them speakers up. We can't hear.
Well, they're about as wide as they can go. All right, well, I'm hoping that you can hear. I mean, you can come sit out here if you want to. Now, that's an offer. I'm not being mean, though.
I mean, you can.
Maybe hurt. All right. With that, then, you know, we're looking at those services, and I'm just going to go ahead and roll this out, because you know, there's been a lot said about previous contract or no contract. We need to get way past that for my tenure, tenure, these folks sitting here. So we, we're to entertain that, but I know that there, there's an element that is in this county that's looking for a different thing other than just having a place for animals to go. They're looking for the issue of ordinances, they're looking for the issues of levying new taxes, and they're like, that's not you. Okay, I understand that, and I appreciate what you've said, making and offering services as an alternative to that, because regardless, if the direction we have to go, we have to have some place for animals to be. And that's without a doubt. Let me ask you a question about this. I've sent some folks that are here in this room, as a member of the Southwest Commission, by nature of being on this board, and also with the North Line Association County Commissioners, I've asked the same question about it, and I've done the research about the number of nonprofit organizations are in the state that go about the business that you do. And then I looked at it also from the standpoint of counties that have the money in order to do the things that folks here are asking this county and the taxpayers to do. And any way you go around it, it's an expensive proposition, and I know there are a lot of folks here that would want to, and I, you know, in point, I haven't read it more in the media than I've had face-to-face conversation or conversation with anyone. We need to understand in the climate that we have right now. And with this particular board, this is not directed to you, but we need to come to some determination about that. There are those, and I've actually received letters, said it'd be better for us just to go ahead and have a chain length finish closure out here and just stump their heads and have kids come and witness it. Now, that's the kind of letters, the letter that I receive, and they, you know, they say, well, they're not going to waste their time with it. But this board, and there are five of us, one is out now with hip replacement, this board's going to have to make a decision based upon the whole picture, and that's one thing, we'll look to it. I want to tell you this, I'm going to say it, and these board members here are free to say it, I'm bad at keeping out, I guess, but I don't want anybody guessing about me. All right? If I had the money, we had the money as a county, then we'd have it all. But we don't, and we're going to make the decisions that are best for the people of Grand County. I can't be a part of going and increasing the taxes on anybody, or going on and having a use tax, or going and saying that we're going to be able to afford a, an animal control officer. What I challenge anybody in that is to sit down and show me where it's going to come from. That's what I have to say, that's what we have to know. And if you're thinking somehow or the other, then we're missing it with regard to having a fund balance required by the state, and then somehow or the other we've got the money to do this. The gentleman that has just made his presentation has offered us an alternative to that, and you, and wisely, you've said, and I think everybody needs to understand, it has to be in a budget cycle. We had to make some tough decisions because of quote-unquote "shut down," slimmed down, whatever you want to call it, about keeping the daycares open, and then all the like. But I appreciate everybody, there are people have a tremendous passion for animals, and that's fine, some of them for some purposes and some for others. So with that, I've had my say, and I'm going to go ahead and say this, I've had a feel with the folks that I serve with on this board, and there's, I can't see, and I'll say it out, I'll say it right now, I can't entertain a motion. I cannot entertain a vote for ordinance. I cannot, and I just can't do it. And the thing of it is, you don't have to put up for me, with me for about another 12 months. And the point of the matter is, is that if you want to change, then you need to get somebody sitting in these seats. And that's not being rude, I'm just telling you the truth. I do not believe it's going to happen. I've been sitting here, and I've had people come and make implication that is, if you don't do it, we're going to sue you. We're going to sue you for this, we're going to sue you for that. And I want you to understand that responsibility of this board is going to be met with respect to existing law. And that's where I have to come from, and these men that are here, and Commissioner Orr can speak their minds about whatever they feel, and I know they have their thoughts on it. And I appreciate everybody that's here, and Dr. Ackerman, I appreciate you coming and letting us know about that relationship, because it's been beat back and forth about the relationship with your organization in this town. And it's not going to do any good, I have to go and wear it out down at McDonald's, or wear it out wherever it wore out, about what's owed or what's not. This is where it meets, right here. Not at any fast food joint, not at Ingles, it's right here. So what we're going to do with this is going to be at the point that if there is, if we can have anybody to entertain the aspects of an ordinance, I know how I will vote. And if that too, we're going to have to have an alternative for those that stand before us and say, well, I have, I have stray animals coming to my door. We need to have a way that that can be addressed. And I'm not one of those that's cold-hearted and want to see animals with their heads stomped in, or my children or grandchildren to witness it. And whoever you are, I wish you'd let me know. I don't know what you've done, but you drew a line in the sand, and it's kind of a one-sided We do what we can with what we've got to do with, and that's, that's the extent of it. And sir, I'm sorry, I know that I've eaten up a lot of other folks' time, but that's how I stand on that, and I would like to ask the other board members, if they have any comment to speak, please.
I have a couple of comments. I have complaints that you wouldn't take animals, even though they offered to pay from Grand County to try to brainwash them. I personally had a walker dog, what you say, stowed, and took over there a few years ago, and you wouldn't, they wouldn't let my wife have it without paying $12. Well, we didn't take it over there, it was in sand distance from my house when she picked it up. And if you're going to support stuff like that, then I can support you. And if you're going to make a change, then I'll make for trying to work out something to take our dogs, if we have. But every dog that's seen walking the road is not a stray. Most of them's got collar, we've been watching.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Please. Thank you. Continue, please.
We've been watching, and I sat out recycling the other day with the dog. There was a dog out there, he had a collar on. He said, now at least about three or four come and smoke them houses apart. They don't have collars on, it's not stray. And every one of my little racers, I've got two or three, they don't have collars, and they're not stray. They probably took care better than a lot of guns that sit here.
Guaranteed.
And so if you're going to make a change and treat everybody alive, and take our dogs at a certain price, then we can consider that in the next budget for our people that want to take them over there. Or I'm sure that you get, we'd get somebody to haul them over there if you just take them. I've got a dog box, and I guess there's $25 boxes sitting there in the park that would hate them, but we're not going to, I'm not lying, I'm not going to have no ordinance, because there's not, it's not that drastic right now. I've seen it worse. But we do appreciate you, I know you treat these hunters and stuff good, and anybody that brings a dog to me, I always heard of you a ton in the past.
I appreciate that. Could I add a couple of comments, because I forget what everybody says, if that's okay? That is, I've heard similar comments about whether somebody could take a dog there or not, or somebody else's dog, I would like to think got mistakenly given away, or something like that, and I've heard those stories before. I feel pretty confident to tell you that's not happened since I've been involved with the shelter. I would like to think that, like any place, that's a service business, maybe, or a service industry, maybe there was a mistake made, how bad, I'm not discounting that at all, but that is not how we do business now. There have been times in the past also where the shelter has possibly not taken an animal. I'm not sure why they wouldn't take an animal if somebody was offering a donation. The only explanation I can give is if they were already at capacity, because we can only, we're required by law, we can only hold a certain number of animals. So that certainly could have happened in the past.
Well, I would more of a one-plant.
I'd like to think that, you know, the mistake that may have occurred to you is not, not something that we, we accept now, and I can't really go back and resolve that issue for you, but I can tell you, like you've asked, the future is not, does not include that kind of behavior. And we're not, I'm not here necessarily to ask for an ordinance, I'm just came to present that we have a service that we can provide, whether you develop an ordinance, or you decide collectively, or individually, people decide they want to bring animals over there, they can. We would have an adoption fee that we would ask them to pay, or not adoption fee, a donation that we would ask them for. A lot of times, it just depends on the circumstance, they may not, you know, ask them for the whole donation. As far as the $10,000 deal, I'm a little bit familiar with that, and when I came and spoke with your county manager, it was decided by our board that there wasn't enough information, so we thought really the best thing to do was let bygones be bygones, and let's just look to the future. Probably if we ever had some kind of arrangement in the future, we would make sure there was some kind of a contract, so there wouldn't be any confusion, but I'm not here for that account either. We've just decided that, you know, we don't, we don't know enough information, we're not worried about that, we just want to be able to be available for you in the future if you guys deem it necessary, and that is the official response from us. I'm not sure what you may hear from other avenues, but it's a, it's a dead issue to us also.
Well, I'm, I'm.
You mess with our dogs, I guarantee you.
Okay, let's, please, let's not start this. Just wait a second.
I'm probably the only one that was on the board at that time, and we couldn't get the service that we need, and I don't believe that we owe anything, because we just didn't renew it the next year, and they, that's what they, I think, were like.
And that's, that's, that's basically the way it's been handled. We're not, we're not interested in going back.
But I'm like, if you find something, if we sign, and it's there, then the county wants to play their dance, but if it's not, which is not, we can, we're not going But if it's not, which is not, we can, we're not looking, I don't think about it as a law.
And, and I wouldn't expect you to. And I don't think that we've, at least since July, we've had any dialogue to that account, that we needed to do that. We didn't really wanna go there again.
I've got to manage to watch a little bit.
I'm sorry, sir.
Anyone else with more plans?
I have a question about, uh, do you have a keep a record of who brings dogs in?
Uh, yes, we do, sir. Um, and, and, and I'm, I, I think we probably did in the past. But we do keep a record of who brings in animals in. Uh, in fact, uh, sometimes that's where there can potentially be bad blood with some of our staff. Because we have to have information on who brought that animal in, so that potentially, we don't end up with somebody else's dog. Um, and so we have mechanisms, mechanisms in place now. And I, I think they've probably done it before, but I can't speak to that. But we do have mechanisms in place now. And I've been at the shelter enough, doing some things for them, that I've seen them in action when somebody brings it in. And I feel comfortable saying that that, that happens the majority of the time now. I cannot, I can't, it sounds like a cop-out, but I can't address the past. But yes, we do.
Do they verify my ID, or do they just, let's try to say, um, use that, um, French dog?
Generally, they have to supply some form of an ID. I do, I do not do that action myself, but generally, we're requesting a driver's license, or a driver's license from some, whoever's bringing the animal in with them. And we actually keep a record of that.
Well, now this time, they wouldn't give me who brought mine in, or they'd been lost.
Right, right.
And, uh, there was two or three other occasions that they, that they wouldn't tell who brought. Uh, this, our sheriff had a dog that he was gonna use to raise pups. And the same lady took it over there and had it neutered. And, you know, it's hard to raise pups when a new male dog.
I would agree.
I believe they probably taught you that schedule.
Yeah. Unless you go to UT and have their.
Yeah.
All right, again, it's Luke Clark, you have a comment?
I got, I got my, my down there. I want dogs all my life. All this little year, all day. I take care of my little. But, ask yourself, not what you, the county can do for you, you do for that dog, whatever, that's appropriate. I take, I take care of my business for sale. We be happy, we give you something. And I will never sign an ordinance on dog control. Because dog control in Grand County is not that great. These people go for their dumpster and say the dog, a dog got no GPS. When it turn loose, it's gonna go. And if it finds food, it'll go back to the same place. If they quit feeding them, they're not stray, they go back home.
Okay, anymore? Thank you very much.
That's, thank you.
And I'd recognize the lady, if she has any comment.
No, thank you for having us.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll have some more dialogue for that. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time, and, um, if you have any questions at all, uh, your county manager is capable of us having a whole discussion.
Okay, Greg, thank you very much. This time, we'd like to recognize Mr. Judy Hofer.
I really don't have anything to say. When I hear what the attitude of the, uh, commissioners is, I know it's no use trying to tell you what the problems really are. So thank you for listening.
All right, this time, recognize anybody from organizations or groups that would like to speak. Thank you, Ms. Hofer. Yes. Please come to the microphone. Welcome, I will pull that mic down so we can hear you.
My name is Ronald Collins, most people know me. And I understand where all these people are coming from. But I can go back 20 years ago. This town was full of stray animals. There's very few, I don't know about out in the country, I have a dog, that I don't keep out. And he, he goes to neighbors, they love him, they feed him. Sometimes I would say, what, and feed him something with stank home. But he goes back, because I continually feed him, but they love him, they really like that dog. And that's good, they're doing a thing for it. They even tried to get him to stay in the garage when it's cold, but he wouldn't, he'd come back home. And if they go somewhere, they can't find food, but it's still mine. And I'm not, I'm like Mike. I pay outrageous taxes right now. And, you know, I have the biggest problem where a comment was made quite back, I think he made it right, that it's a felony to kill an animal. You know my big problem? It's not a felony to kill a baby.
Oh, my, I remember.
So, uh, an animal, whatever, we all pound them, we all love them, but they're still an animal, but they're not a human. And so, that's basically what I have to say. And I, I appreciate the fact that you're not willing to raise taxes over this. Because right now, it's really hard to pay taxes. And hard to pay insurance and keep it going. So, and it's okay for anybody to have a problem, but there's, like, like whoever was it said, most of the time, I think it was you, Ben. Most of the time, you see like down our way, it dumps, you see animals everywhere. But most of the time, you live alone, they're the one, they belong to somebody.
Thank you very much. Mr. Styles, recognize you, please.
My name's Roy Styles. I've born and raised in this country, and I've lived here for 68 years. I've owned dogs all my life. I can assure you that my dogs get the best of care. They're fed, they're fed a quality diet every day. They're given their shots on a regular basis. Not only the rabies shots, but shots against communicable diseases. They're wormed on a regular basis. They have houses, and they're taken care of. And I, I really enjoy having my dogs. I've shipped dogs all over the world. I've sent more than 30 to Germany, I've sent them to Sweden, I've sent them to Greece, I've sent them to Hawaii, I've sent them to Canada. And I've sent them to Mexico, and that's several states in the United States. And I know, I noted that as a plot reader. I appreciate the job that our county commissioner does. The majority of the people have elected these folks up here to do their jobs. And they don't need somebody at every board meeting trying to tell them how to run their job. We don't need any ordinances trying to tell us how to take care of our dogs. Because I think we know how to take care of them. Most of these dogs are valuable dogs anyhow. And I certainly have had the problem about people who are opposed to hunting, taking off my dog collars, my tracking collars, and throwing them in the ditch, or into the river. And this has happened on more than one occasion. And my dogs were picked up and taken to the Humane Society over here in Cherokee County. Dr. Ackerman, I know him well, I've been to his office many times, and he's treated my dogs on many occasions. I can tell you, he is offered the county, it sounds to me like a good alternative to setting up a, a facility here in Grand County. First of all, we do not have the, the funds to set up such a facility. It'd be very expensive. Uh, we would also have to hire a, an animal control person, we'd also have to have a truck. And if I understand this, it would be quite expensive. It seems to me that we have an alternative here. And that is to try to work with the Humane Society over here in Cherokee County. I do not see all this problem about stray animals out here. I believe I've traveled these roads as much as anybody, and I have talked to many of these folks who drive the road continuously. And I'm talking about the people who work for the telephone companies, people who work for the electric companies. And they tell me they don't see all these stray dogs. Now, I'm sure there are a few stray dogs, and we need to address that situation. If there are stray dogs, we can, we can, these may take them over here to Cherokee County. And we do not have to bear the expense of building a facility, hiring an animal control agent, buying a truck, and go on all this expense. So I, I do not believe we need any laws or regulations or packs regarding our pets. Some of these folks would have us, uh, tell them how many dogs, they would wanna tell us how many dogs we can own. Whether or not we can breed a dog, or raise puppies. I went to a meeting in Raleigh, uh, a couple of years ago. These folks were trying to tell us that if we did not spay or neuter our dogs, then we would be penalized. We would have to pay a certain amount of money to have a registered male or female that was not neutered. We'd have to pay a penalty in order to own that dog or kill. I highly resent that. I take care of my business, I take care of my dogs. And I would highly resent anybody coming in here trying to tell me that I can own two dogs and only raise one that are puppies a year. I don't figure that's anybody's business, except mine. I take care of my dogs, and I don't let anybody else take care of their business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment? Walter, anything you don't say?
I know, I didn't, they, that's fake, I just don't want no laws passed. We got all the laws we need, but just leave them like they are. They said $50 to get rid of one, a bullet don't cost $50. If you've got an old dog that you don't want, instead of taking, setting it out, just get rid of it. Forget the mu, the, the Humane Society. We've done that all our life, what changes it? We don't need the Humane Society, we don't need none of this stuff. Just leave the laws like they are, leave us alone, you won't have no problem with us.
Yes. Yes, certainly.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Patricia Orr, and, uh, I'm not proposing an ordinance either. But I'd like to put in a plea for some recourse for people like myself, who was at the dumpster on Saturday afternoon. Just dumping my garbage, and a lady was there in front of me, and she, she had found a puppy. It didn't really look like, I wouldn't be able to see the face of it. It didn't really look like it had even been weaned. Maybe this long. Um, in a cardboard box. No water, a little hard roll that I dug up very seriously. My big dogs at the house could've eaten, much less that tiny puppy. No blanket, no nothing. And, um, I would just like to offer a sincere plea on behalf of those animals that people are in this chunky. I think in our, and you can recognize that these hunters love their animals, they look after them, they put a lot of money in them. And many of us who are here today are here in support of trying to work out something with the Humane Society for situations like that. That we've been trying to find a home for that animal. It's not one I can take. We have, uh, three big dogs in our family, and that little dog probably wouldn't survive. But I think that, um, it seems to me that a lot of people develop this idea that it's us against them mentality. Uh, but I think it doesn't have to be that way. That if we can work with that Humane Society, and at least be given the opportunity, I'd be willing, right now, to take that little dog somewhere and pay a fee for it. It could be a dog that looked after it. But we have tried to do that in the past, and they were just inundated with animals and couldn't take anything. I just hope that you will consider what Dr. Ackerman has presented, and offer, uh, try to come to some agreement that everybody can live with. I, I've valued individual liberty as much as anybody in this room, I promise you that. I've had hunters come to my property and, and I rescued their dogs and tracked, tracked them down, and, and gotten them there. So I, I hope that we, even though there's obviously two different widely divergent views here, I think there's room that we can work together. And I commend you, Mr. Williams, and, and, uh, Mr. Ackerman, and all of these boards who are offering to consider this one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, we have about 18 minutes. Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Brittany Keenan. And, my name is Brittany Keenan, and I have quite a few dogs of my own. I have nothing about, I have nothing against anybody owning 18, as many dogs as you'd like, hunting or not, house pets or anything. My concern is, as it was a few years ago, if a person did want to get their dog neutered. Young people that have dogs, that do not hunt, that just, the dog comes and eat. It's out there, it's not.
It's against the law, that's against the law right there. It's against state, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, I'm sorry, I jumped right in there.
Okay.
That's one of the issues of law already. It is against the law to have an animal that eat, run loose.
Oh, well, I didn't know that.
Okay, that's one of the three. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse, excuse me.
But before, a few years ago, we did have the van come, and it did come to Angles. And I was working with Judy at the time, uh, taking numbers and calling back people, setting up appointments to have your dog neutered. Whether it's a cat, a male, or female. At an inexpensive cost, which really helped, I believe, a lot of people that could not afford to take a dog to a vet, to spend $150. So that's just my point. Um, I'm not into controlling anybody's animals, or not having them tied up, having them loose. In fact, I've got one red tit, she's got a collar, and she runs up and down the road. At night, I bring her in, that one, nobody staying up. But it's mainly that convenience that I think would help some people here in this county, that if that was available. And that's my point. I have nothing against some, nothing against owning 15 to 20. Cause I own five, and no house dogs. I have nothing against that. Okay?
What was your first name again?
Brenda.
Brenda, Brenda Keenan?
Yes, K-D-E-N-R.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else, please?
Hey there, my name's Lionel Alton. And I guess there was just, there were some things I was gonna address that they seem to have been addressed. But in my view, you know, you've got the dogs that are dumped to the dumpsters, that are put in a little box, and they're, they were obviously just dumped dogs. They aren't people's dogs that they care for and are out roaming. There's laws against that. There's laws against taking the dogs out of the dumpster. In our community, I have to believe that if somebody's got a litter of pups, and they're five weeks old, and the next day, they don't have any pups anymore, somebody knows that. Somebody knows, and somebody needs to say, hey, we're gonna bust you for taking all them pups down and dumping them to dumpsters. Okay, it's personal responsibility. It, it's what we have to do as individuals or society, is look out your back door. Uh, the other thing is, is, you know, and I, and I'm not against hunting at all, and we know the rules on hunting. And we know that if a dog has a collar on, you don't bother the dog. Uh, if anything, you get the number because he's been there for three days, and you call the hunter and say, hey man, your dog's hanging out here, he's my captive. And they come get the dog, so there's no problem with hunting. But if a dog's running in my backyard and doesn't have a collar, and I don't know the dog, that dog is now a stray. And I'm gonna handle that stray. I had a six-year-old girl, she came in the house yesterday, said, Dad, there's a dog in the backyard. It was a dog as big as my lab, which was a 100-pound dog. If I see that dog out there, and he's running, and he don't have a collar, and he's a stray dog, and he poses a threat to my family. And I'm gonna address that as an individual. I don't need laws to do that. I don't need ordinances to do that. You have to take care of your own business and your own backyard. And that's just the way I feel. But we've got plenty of laws on the books, I think we don't enforce them. I think that we have a hard time finding people for things like their dogs. And, and we just don't enforce them. I think the same thing goes with our litter problem, I think the same thing goes with law issues. Is this enforced? And we have laws on the books, and we don't need to make new ones. And that's about all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, there it is. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Hope, and my husband and I are in the Hightown over on Highway 28. Since the dumpster site on Highway 28 is manned six days out of the week, from eight to two, the problem of dumping animals has kind of subsided. However, on the first day of bear hunting season this year, there was a beautiful, about a year-old male dumped there. You could see where he had the telemetry collar that had been taken off, and he was just chasing vehicles back and forth. So, I know that they installed a light at the dumpsters, and what looks to be a camera. Is it operational? Can we find out who's dumping the animals there?
That's a question that's interesting to me. The cameras are operational. I mean, they are, they have photos.
I mean, if we did that at other dumpster sites here in the county, it might detract from leading them at the dumpsters. So, we have five dogs and six cats, and all of our animals are animals that have been dumped and abused and starved, two of which, three of which are hunting dogs that just wandered up on my property. One, he could barely walk, he had been out there for so long without food and water. You know? I agree that the problem has dissipated over the years. I've been here twenty-one years. But it's still a problem. I am in favor of working with the Humane Society. I don't think we need ordinances or dog tags or a dog catcher. I think by teaming up with the Humane Society, like we did in the past, it gave us an outlet. At least we could hold, we had hope. We could hold the dog until that Wednesday when they got here, and take it to Engles parking lot, and surrender the dog. You just had to take care of it for a few days. And I'm in total support of that. I wish it would happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Copert. I suppose I have a minute. Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Mison. Just listening to all the comments, I was struck by it. And I don't know if this was addressed since I was a little bit late. Do we know the numbers? And I hate the stall action based on trying to measure stuff, but do we know the numbers? Do we know how many animals need the attention of the Humane Society? Do we have any way to work the numbers so that we come out with some number about what the costs are? Because at the end analysis, end of the day, everybody's worried about money, right? If so, but we don't know the magnitude of that, I don't think. I think, I think we know that some of us think there's a problem, some of us don't. And my other comment, and maybe it's a pie in the sky kind of thing, but I think that a few of us, from all different perspectives, should come together in some kind of formal group and discuss the whole issue in civil manner, and try to come up with a solution that's, that's, that everybody likes. So, my comment is, I wish we could think about the numbers so that we could work those numbers against what the actual cost is, because we really don't know, we're speculating. In the other, rather than being us versus them sort of situation, could a few guys from the side that say there's no problem, and a few of us from the side that thinks there's a problem, could we sit down over pizza or a iced tea or something periodically and try to come out with a solution that would work for everybody? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, ma'am. Donna, Donna Myers.
Hi, my name is Donna Myers. I just wanted to get on record that we do have an option, a low-cost option for spaying and neutering, and that's Lovin's Run in Murphy. They continuously advertise a twenty-dollar spaying and neuter for dogs. They also offer a ten-dollar rabies shot. So, we do have that option. Anyone who thinks that they would like to move towards getting their animals spayed and neutered, there's really no reason not to, because we have the Lovin's Run. They have a website, they have a phone number you can call, they are in business to do that, to do just that. To spay and neuter, to resolve a problem of overpopulation, and also to rescue abandoned dogs and cats, and to find forever homes for them. So, keep that in mind, Lovin's Run.
Okay, thank you, Donna. I have seen that advertised in our local papers, in the back.
They used to come to Snowbird, a group we had, one of my rapturers spayed. And they came out there one day, and on a Saturday, and there's no telling how many they spayed. It just cost like twenty dollars. I looked, I looked at his price.
Yes, ma'am.
They come once a year. It's missionary veterinarian school.
Yeah.
And they come once a year, and they treat horses, goats, anything, anything at all. And they're super inexpensive. Yeah. And it's usually posted in town, in front of the drugstore, probably about a month before they come. Yeah. And they've been here for three years straight. And they intend to come next year.
I know those two, spaying and neutering, run for a hundred and fifteen to three hundred dollars.
See, I, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not recognizing.
Ms. Keenan.
I, all of my animals, all eleven of them, are all spayed and neutered. I didn't take advantage of Lovin's Run, which is an awesome, and I've dealt with them before. I used Angela here in town, and she has been more than fair. I mean, at one time, I rescued a daddy cat and three kittens, and she neutered them all. It didn't cost me that kind of money to have four cats spayed and neutered. I mean, she's not the cheapest, but she's in business to make money. You know, I mean, isn't that what businesspeople do? That's why I'm in business. I mean, and she had, she uses good quality anesthesia, she cares about the animal. I find that type of, in his proposal, is very expensive. I mean, I just had a female cat spayed for seventy-five dollars.
Eighty-five to a hundred and forty dollars on a cat.
Yeah, I had a female spayed and a kitten, and it was seventy-five, but...
I know that in, Ms. Hope, in previous conversations that we've had regarding this issue, that folks have talked about that that's the thing to do, is to spay and neuter, it's free.
It is. Every animal that Jeff and I have rescued, and it's been hundreds over the twenty-one years that we've been here, every animal that we keep that is unadoptable, that because of psychological problems or whatever, first thing we do is spay and neuter them.
Okay, thank you. We have about four minutes. Ma'am?
Okay. I'd say with Lovin's Run, in order to do that, you have to drive all the way over to Murphy, to the other side. It's close to one-twenty-nine, we markets there. And you have to register first. And you may go to somewhere, they may, they'll send you to wherever is available. It may even be as far as Hailwasey, to a doctor, because you're paying a very small amount of money, but they're scheduling. So, you have to go all the way out there, and then you have to drive out again, and you have to go wherever and to do it. And then you have to stay all day, or you're gonna have to drive back. Because you have to drop the animal off at eight in the morning.
You have an always problem.
I know, but what I'm saying is that you're caught, you're caught, you're everyday person. It's gonna be a very hard thing for them to do that sometimes.
If you're gonna pay twenty dollars, you're gonna have to sacrifice.
I know, but, okay, Nancy.
I'm sorry.
What I'm saying is that perhaps if we came up with a way to help that Lovin's Run system, make it an easier thing, or do it in a better effort, maybe that would be something that we could do to help. I'm just saying, because it is, it is logistically hard for us, we're so far away. Another thing I would like to ask is, is there any way you can post at the dumpsters signs that state the law? If you drop off an animal, then you are, you know, this is the law, and you will receive this. And that just that, you know, if the county would do that, it maybe could deter people from doing these things. That, like Patricia was saying, I went into the Engles parking lot, and somebody had dropped off a box of kittens, and they had jumped out of the box, and they were all dead, except one, and, which I was able to rescue. But, but if we had posted things that let people know, put it in the paper and say, this is the law for you to do this. And with value of the Humane Society openly saying, yes, you can bring your animals there, it is, this is a big thing. You know, it is a big thing, that we know that we can get animals, if somebody can't afford to take their animal, I mean, to pay the fee, then if they, you know, know somebody they can call, that we can pull together the money. At least we have something available.
Robin, what's your last name, please?
Mesa.
Mesa, I know.
I'll tell you one thing on this spaying and neutering. Spacy cats, save yourself twenty or thirty dollars. And let Mother Nature take itself, take care of itself. As many goats as we've got, I give you pride.
This cat was brought to my place by a couple that sounded as a couple of gab in a box. Somebody had done a trouble. Isn't it what I just wanted to do, and I'll flip the way I was.
I'm sorry, we are out of time. At this time, I'd like to thank everybody who's coming out for the workshop sessions. If you have something out that is burning out for you, we have a sign up list for the comment period during our record session. This time, we stand adjourned.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address what he just said. I live at Judge Creek. One month ago, I live at Judge Creek. One month ago, someone had dropped off a mother and five kittens. I spent a week and a half trying to trap them. I went on Sunday night to get my traps, and on Saturday night, I caught a groundhog. And I decided I wouldn't be leaving no more tonight. Sunday night, I went up, it was dark, something was in the woods killing them. And I sat in my truck and cried. Shame on you.
Shame on you is that.
We stand adjourned.